Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I am Councilmember Rue Landau. I am our first openly LGBTQ councilperson in the city of Philadelphia, and I am so amazingly honored to stand before you today with this wonderful team up here. Got to tell you, it's been already a long Pride Month, even though it's been just a couple of days. And I had this moment of just turning around and seeing all of our colleagues, community members, and allies, elected officials with these signs supporting LGBTQ youth and trans kids, and got a little emotional. So it's really, really, really important to know that we have this support. So let me just say how powerful it feels to have all of you today here in City Hall standing up for LGBTQ plus rights. Today, we are standing together to tell the world Philadelphia is no place for hate, discrimination, or violence against LGBTQ plus people. We stand together to affirm the values that continue to make Philadelphia a beacon of inclusivity, diversity, and unwavering support for all of its residents. We are joined here by LGBTQ plus leaders, advocates, allies, and in some cases, the founder of the LGBTQ plus rights movement. The LGBTQ plus community is facing an inflection point that I don't think we could have imagined 10 years ago when marriage equality became the law of the land and so many of us felt like there was no going back. But unfortunately, now our rights are on the line. There's been a noted rise of LGBTQ plus hate and violence, especially amongst against trans people. Recent murders of trans people such as Nex Benedict in Oklahoma and numerous Philadelphians, including Markey MJ Jackson, Shanti Tucker, and Cherie Diamond Jackson McDonald in Philadelphia are outrageous, and they are unacceptable and must be stopped. Black trans women in particular are disproportionately affected by violence, displacement, and discrimination. Right now, LGBTQ plus people across the country and right here in our Commonwealth are facing unprecedented attacks on our rights and threaten to strip back the progress we've made as a country, state, and city, including 515 anti-LGBTQ plus bills introduced nationwide in just in 2024, and four of them right here in Pennsylvania. The stakes are so, so high for our community, and especially for LGBTQ plus youth who have found themselves the target of so much of this hate and action. It is sobering to note that the LGBTQ plus young people are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. That's why today we're standing together and saying enough is enough. While Pride is meant to be a time of joy and celebration, it is also a time of action. Remember, the first Pride was a riot led by Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Ms. Major, and Philadelphia's very own Mark Siegel, who is here with us today. And that's why today my office successfully passed three resolutions saying loud and clear, if unjust laws come to Philly from the state or federal government, city council will not stand for them. Further, we will hold a comprehensive hearing in the fall to examine the systemic barriers still facing our community here in Philadelphia and explore solutions to any obstacles our communities are facing. I have a vision for Philadelphia and a country where LGBTQ plus people can live as their full, authentic, bold, and perhaps most importantly, unafraid selves every single day of the year, not just during June. I am so thankful for everyone standing here with me today. I want to recognize and thank Mayor Parker, who is on her way, and my colleagues, Councilmembers Brooks, Harity, Ahmed, Gaudier, for your support. I'm grateful for the presence and support of State Representative-elect Andre Carroll, State Representative Elizabeth Fiedler, Malcolm Kenyatta, and Joe Hoenstein, and for Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon, who is here with us today as well. I'm also grateful to all of the amazing advocates and allies here with us today, including Tatiana Woodard from the Ark of Safety, Mark Siegel from the Philadelphia Gay News, Tyrell Brown and Diamond Anthony from Galley, Chris Henderson and Nikki Grant from Amistad Law Project, Paul Cheeseman from William Way, Jasmine Henderson from ACT UP, Naema Sanchez from the ACLU, Cassie Tompkins from Visit Philly, Zach Wilco from the IBA, Selena Morrison from the Office of LGBT Affairs, Shayna Williams from the NISA Morris House, representatives from the Philly Trans March, the Trans Masculine Advocacy Network, Project Safe, Valley Youth House, and Independence Blue Cross, and community leaders, including Chef Joy Parham, Shiz Chestside Elmore, didn't do that one well, did I? Shakira King, and Tej McCoy. We have two special guests I would like to present today with an enclosed copy of the Pride resolution we introduced today. First, I'd like to bring up State Representative-elect Andre Carroll, who would take office next year as the second openly LGBTQ Black elected representative in Philadelphia, as well as Jasper Liam, Executive Director of the Attic Youth Center, who does amazing work for the LGBTQ plus youth here in Philadelphia. And I'd like to now introduce a few speakers. We are so, I am so delighted and we are so lucky to have a tremendous ally and great supporter of the LGBTQ plus community, Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon in the Federal House of Representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I couldn't be more delighted to celebrate Pride Month in Philadelphia, a city that was founded by William Penn in order to celebrate a diversity of humankind, diversity of faith, fleeing persecution. He was an early proponent of tolerance and having a free society in which people of different races and religions could live in harmony. It's a concept that's been sadly lacking in our national life today. We've seen extremists seize upon identity politics as a way to drive culture wars and most distressingly to demonize and marginalize trans children and families. We've seen just bill after bill through Congress this session, dealing with book bans and denial of medical care and eliminating DEI positions, all in an effort to sow division by scaring people needlessly with misinformation and disinformation. So it is so great to be among a community that is accepting and understands the dignity of all of us and is working to make sure that we recognize everyone's dignity and that people are free to live their most authentic lives. And it's also wonderful, I was talking with one of our youth advocates earlier today, and saying, you know, the kids get it, we just need to support the kids. It's the adults who have to catch up. So I'm really grateful to Councilwoman Landau and to all the allies, the council members, the state House members, everyone who's working in this space for supporting these kids, for working together to create that more perfect union, that better city that we all want to see. So thank you.
Next, I would like to welcome up a trailblazer in our community, our historian and one of our leaders, and our local member who was at Stonewall at the time it all started. I wanted to bring up the publisher of the PGN, Mark Siegel.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Mayor, representatives from council, representatives from Harrisburg. Good to see you all. I'm a proud Philadelphian. I'm actually chauvinistic about Philadelphia. And I want to show you how far today we have come. I was born in this city in 1951. I know that's prehistoric, people. There was no internet, no cellphone. We didn't even have color TV. But when I grew up in 1951, 50s and 60s, at that time, about 13 years old, I realized I was gay. And I wanted to find out, gee, why couldn't I tell my parents that? Why couldn't I tell my friends that? What was it that held me back? Let's see, we weren't in the newspapers, we weren't in magazines, we weren't on the radio. We basically were invisible as a people. So to find out who I was, I went to the library, and there were five books in the Philadelphia Public Library, five, only five. And you know where they were? They were in the criminology department, they were in the religious department, and they were in the psychological department. I left the Philadelphia Library 13 years old, thinking I was illegal, immoral, and psychologically I also felt because 99.9% of our community, because of that, had to be in the closet, I was the only gay person in a city of 1.6 million people. So when I graduated high school, I understood there was a place where there are other people like me, and I wanted to learn what that was like. And you see, for some odd reason, inside me, I didn't think there was anything wrong. And I wanted to find out there were other people like me who felt the way I did. So on May 10th, 1969, I got that little diploma, and I high-tailed it to New York. The first night in New York, I took the subway to Fourth Street and started looking for the gay community. You see, there were no signs, neon signs saying, "This way to the gay folk." But I eventually found Christopher Street. And for the next six weeks, I had lots of friends, I walked up and down Christopher Street, occasionally being harassed by the police or people from other parts of the city. And you do what other 18-year-old people do, you talk about fashion, you talk about show business, you do a little talking about politics, but every night at about 11:30 or 12:00, we went to Stonewall. Why did you go to Stonewall? It was dirty, it was illegal, it had watered-down drinks. The only reason we went to Stonewall, Mayor, please excuse me, at 18 years old, what do you want to do? You want to dance your ass off. So you went there, and there was a safe place to hold hands, to hug, to dance. We couldn't do that outside without being arrested. It was a safe place, and I'd only been in New York six weeks. And at that point, I didn't know very much, so standing in the back of the bar, the lights blinked. I asked the person next to me, "What does that mean?" They said, "Oh, just a raid, the police will come in, they'll take some money, and they'll leave." Not June 28th. On June 28th, they burst through the doors, they busted up the bar, they threw bottles, they threw us up against the wall. I'd never seen such violence in my life before. I was scared, I was frightened, and I also felt lower than low. My thought was, gee, I better call the police. But these were the police. And if you can't call the police to protect you, who can protect you? No one. I felt very low. By the time we got outside, I started feeling angry, like many of my other friends at that point. The police tried to leave, we threw things at the door. They were inside the bar and couldn't get outside the bar. For the first time in history, the police who had always incarcerated us, we were incarcerating the police. I was looking at that moment, something happened to me that changed my life. A man by the name of Marty Robinson came up to me, gave me a piece of chalk, and said, "Right on the streets, right on the walls, tomorrow night, Stonewall." Thanks to Marty Robinson, from there, we met day in and day out at Stonewall and started leafleting on that street. From Stonewall, the ashes of Stonewall came Gay Liberation Front. Everything we have today here goes back to Stonewall. One night, we were leafleting for LGBT medical rights, we called it gay and lesbian those days, and we would have symptoms of various things and where you could go. That created the first medical units for our LGBT community. Then another night, we were passing out flyers for gay youth. That was an organization I had founded to bring young gay people to a place where they could feel community and love. That is how the first gay youth organizations were founded. First community centers were founded, first trans organizations were founded. And then if all of that were not enough, at the first year, we did Gay Pride. And the idea that was out loud and proud. So Mayor, how do you think I feel right now, standing here? I'm a proud Philadelphian, and I want you to know your history, which is our history, which is the nation's history. We have contributed as much to gay pride and the gay movement for equality than any other state or city. Did you know we had marriage equality here a year before the Supreme Court ruled? Did you know that the first Non-Discrimination Act in America was here in Pennsylvania? See Dolores Tucker, thank you. See Dolores Tucker and Dr. Ethel Allen, remember her? Yeah, went to Harrisburg as Secretary of the Commonwealth, and they issued the nation's first statewide gay pride resolutions. Two women of color! If you think that's not enough, I would thank you for that. I worked with a man with, let's see, Robert N.C. Nix, do you remember? Yeah. So in 1976, I wasn't supposed to take this much time. But I'm glad we're, thank you for helping us get our history out there, because I won Pennsylvania and Philadelphia to be proud. 1976, the first Equality Act ever got introduced in Congress. It was introduced by Bella Abzug, and Bella was a friend of mine. And she called me and said, "I need more people to co-sponsor this. I especially need other members of Congress who are people of color." I was a friend of Robert N.C. Nix. And Robert N.C. Nix went to his office, said, "I need you to sign on to this. I marched with you around City Hall when I was 13 years old. I need you to stand for my community now." Robert N.C. Nix became the first person of color to ever sign on to the Equality Act. Oh, one other thing about Robert N.C. Nix, he was the founder of the Congressional Black Caucus. Yeah, a good deal of this work we did together. So, well, when you got a little older. I'm the old one. So what I want to tell you is, today, I feel such pride, from going from a person in Philadelphia who thought he was the only one, to having all of these representatives, congresspeople, senators, community leaders. We have community leaders now, we didn't have any in 1969. Thank you all for the work you do, and thank you all for making me very proud every day. And thank you, Philadelphia, for being out loud and proud.
Thank you, Mark Siegel. We love the history lessons. I want to make sure, I know I had said them in my remarks already, but I want to make sure that I'm also recognizing Councilmembers Ahmed Brooks Young, also State Rep. Joe Hoenstein, I think I already said it, and also Commissioner Lisa Deely. But it is my, I did this already, right, I'll do them again, Fiedler, is my amazing honor to introduce someone who also is a history maker. I am so, there's so many of us, this term actually, who have broken barriers and glass ceilings, but I don't know that anybody is going to change the trajectory of Philadelphia more than our 100th mayor, the first woman, the first black woman, somebody who's been standing with our LGBTQ plus community for years and years and years before she hit elective office, and I know this because I've worked with her so many times, who's been an ally to our community, who will stand with us on good times and in bad, will make sure that along with council, the administration is making Philadelphia the safest place it possibly can be for our entire expansive community. It is my pleasure to bring up Mayor Sherrell Parker.
So we said them, but we have to say them again, and I'm just going to ask them to come up here and scoot over here with me, because we're the lawmakers. I'm here with Councilwoman, Member Rue Landau, State Rep. Andre Carroll is here. Councilwoman Gaudier, scoot over, please. Scoot, scoot. You know, you know, they learn what it's like. Everybody is always trying to run real fast when you're in the hot seat, but now you got to come closer. State Rep. Fiedler, you got to come closer. Chair, Commissioner Deely, Rep. Hoenstein, did I say it right, Hoenstein? Stein? Stein, Hoenstein, thank you. I screw it up every time, thank you. Councilwoman Kendra Brooks is here. Councilmember Nina Ahmad, Councilmember Jeff Young, come on over. Congresswoman, come on over here, Congresswoman, I need you to like stand right here. Council President Johnson, can you come over here? I know you're going to speak, sir, but you come right here, please. They do it together, they tag team, they speak through osmosis, the Congresswoman and the Council President, because they are in the same district, they work well together. Let me say this to you. Mark Siegel, I was so happy that when I walked in, you were giving your remarks, because nothing becomes more frustrating than seeing any community attempt to move forward and make additional gains without paying homage to and understanding and acknowledging that you just don't arrive where you are through osmosis, that shoulders, like those of Mark Siegel, and he was being extremely humble, you know what I was thinking when I was sitting here, because I was thinking about Taz Gust and Happy Fernandez? Do people even know what the Domestic Partnership Bill was? Long before it was a popular thing to do so, although I'm the mayor of the city, I stand here with you as no Johnny-come-lately ally to the LGBTQIA+ community. And one of the things that's always been extremely important to me is that I never act like I know what it's like to walk a mile in your shoes, because I don't. One thing I do know is, being black and a woman and living at the intersection of race and gender all of my life, where people telling me that I should walk different, look different, act different, talk different, and be anybody other than who I am as a person, I know that I didn't like it. And so if you wonder why there's been a willingness to stand shoulder to shoulder with the LGBT community to say that I support you, that I respect you, that we should celebrate and have pride in you being allowed to be your authentic self without any fear of repercussion and having access to economic opportunity in the midst of it all, that is something that's extremely essential. Give the shoulders on which you stand a huge round of applause right now. That's extremely important. Yes, history makers, you, our history maker, my teacher. Just last Friday, where's Selena? Selena? I've been always trying to get in Selena's closet. Hey, Mr. President, she knows, she throw it on. Just last Friday, I had the privilege of attending the Pride flag raising, where I was reminded of the importance of a standing in solidarity together and oneness. So on today, as we embark on this months-long celebration of Pride, we recommit ourselves together as a city where we are creating an environment where everyone feels safe, they feel accepted, and they feel celebrated. Let me hear you say "safe." Accept it. Celebrate it. When you hear me talk about this thing called One Philly, a United City, I want you to know that I care very deeply about every Philadelphian living within the 143 square miles that make up our city, and making sure that we all have access to the economic opportunity and equal opportunities to be our best selves. Each of us, in our own right, in our own way, is important to me. So I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Pride Month, and you can't be in here with me without giving me a One Philly. So everybody put your ones in the air for me, please, if you will. This is what we want to do and unify our city. Let me hear you all say "One Philly."
One Philly.
A United City.
A United City.
You sound like you were in service on Sunday morning. I need you to put your ones in the air, let's let people hear us down the hall and say it with pride. Okay, let me hear you all say "One Philly."
One Philly.
A United City.
A United City.
Thank you so very much. Happy Pride Month. Thank you, Rue, for your leadership. History maker, I don't care how many good allies the community can have, no one can represent you better than you can represent yourself.
That was wonderful. But there's more. Next, I would like to introduce Councilmember Ahmed. We know that access to health care and access to safe and affordable housing are very much intertwined. So I'd like to bring up the Chair of the Committee on...
Public Affairs.
Wrong, I know, I'm going, I'm going to do this backwards real quick. First, Councilmember Gaudier, the Chair on the Committee on Housing Neighborhood Development and the Homeless is Councilmember Jamie Gaudier. Before she comes up, I wanted to recognize Councilwoman Phillips, who arrived, as well as Councilmember Nick O'Rourke.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I'm Councilmember Jamie Gaudier, and I always say lovingly that I represent the gayest council district in the city of Philadelphia. When I spoke at the BU Philly Pride March this weekend, I remarked that Pride Month is a time for joy and community, but I also noted that it is a time for action, because LGBTQ plus rights are absolutely under attack. And we know that we, as a city, still have a lot more to do to support our LGBTQ plus residents who experience a disproportionate amount of the hardships that we talk about every day. As the Chair of City Council's Committee on Housing Neighborhood Development and the Homeless, I'm committed to working alongside Vice Chair Rue Landau to address high rates of housing insecurity and homelessness in the queer community. More than one in five transgender Pennsylvanians experience housing discrimination, highlighting the urgent need for inclusive and protective housing policies. And for 10% of transgender Pennsylvanians, this discrimination has been so suffocating that they are experiencing homelessness. We just heard from a variety of speakers about all of the different hardships that queer residents, most especially queer youth, endure. Housing insecurity absolutely exasperates these problems, because we know that a safe, stable, and affordable home is the bedrock of a successful life. We know that the fight for LGBTQ plus equality did not end the day same-sex marriage became the law of the land. And I am proud to stand with Councilmember Rue Landau, our council colleagues, Mayor Parker, our council... our Council President, and the community to affirm that the city of Philadelphia will continue to work towards true and total equality for our queer residents. Thank you, Councilmember Landau, for your leadership on this issue. I am so proud to stand with you today and always, and I look forward to following up this talk with action. Thank you so much.
Your sign, Councilmember Gaudier. I want to just take a moment also to bring up Council President Kenyatta Johnson.
Come on over here, Rue. But first and foremost, and I think the mayor said it all, so I'll be remiss, and I got a good friend, Micah, raise your hand. Can you give my friend Micah a round of applause? Micah works a lot with Sharif Street, but also been supportive of me, as I've always from since 2001, always received the support of Liberty City. But I also want to take a moment to acknowledge Mark Siegel. Give Mark Siegel a round of applause. And he's such a humble guy, always in the background. Always in the background. But most importantly, just want to come past and show some support for my colleague Rue Landau, right? As she advocate and make sure that she put on the forefront in City Council, making sure you're protecting the rights of the LGBTQ community. And so Rue, for you to, most importantly, not only work with a sense of passion, but most importantly, a sense of advocacy, I just want to say anyway, I could be supportive of your efforts. Don't hesitate to reach, I should probably call about staff or something later on, but that's a different conversation. But most importantly, though, just want to take time out of my schedule, come down here, show you that I support you and anyway that I could be supportive of this effort. Don't hesitate to reach out to me, okay? And also, I'll say this, and with the package of bills that she introduced, following up on what Councilmember Jamie Gaudier says, as opposed to talking specifically focusing on action and making sure that this is the most welcoming city in America, right? And so we thank you for not only speaking truth to power, but actually focusing up through action and public policy, all right?
Thank you so much. Okay, I got you. I now have the pleasure to also to invite up another colleague, someone who I have also worked with long before we were both elected to City Council, the Chair of the Public Health and Human Services Committee, of which I am a member, Dr. Nina Ahmed.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, happy Pride Month. First, I want to extend my gratitude to my colleague, Councilmember Rue Landau, with whom I've worked before. We've been in rooms, difficult rooms, having difficult conversations around discrimination. And so I know her passion. I know her unwavering commitment and advocacy as a human rights activist for her leadership on issues affecting the LGBTQ+ community. I'm going to stray from my comments that my very wonderful communications director wrote for me because I want to speak from my heart about why I am here, not just because I'm her colleague, because I'm an ally. And I was an ally before I was the mother of someone who identifies as queer. I was an ally when I watched my friend Ted die of AIDS. And this was in the early 90s. And my daughter, who is queer, was tiny then, she was a baby. And I remember her with Ted on a beach playing, and I didn't know that Ted wouldn't be there to see her grow up. And so I know how deeply our communities have been affected. And this is why, what advances we make in our research and advances we make, we cannot take our eyes off the prize. We have to know things can slip right back. So in the last few years, we've sounded the alarm, particularly on mental health, louder than ever before, destigmatizing the concept of not being okay. It is all right for us to say we are not okay. And we need to give permission to all of us to say that, to feel it, and support each other when that happens. We amplify this work every May during Mental Health Month, which concluded. Fittingly now, during Pride Month, we must continue to acknowledge, particularly from a public health perspective, that mental health is health. It is crucial for our overall well-being as functioning, productive members of society. It has been reported that approximately 1.8 million LGBTQ+ youth age 13 to 24 seriously consider suicide each year in the U.S., with at least one attempt occurring every 45 seconds. That's, that's serious. People are hurting, and we need to be able to see it, help, and make sure we have resources for them. Health is wealth. Yet, when we have those people in positions of power, which is happening right now, endangering that well-being and sneaking to reverse the progress we have made towards ensuring all people who can live their fullest, most authentic lives, we clearly must do more to disrupt their status quo. And we need all of us to be loud, proud, and tell them, you may not take us back. Today, we seek critical state funding for HIV/AIDS research and preventive care programs that have been cut in states such as Delaware, stripped because of federal cuts. In 2022, the Pennsylvania Department of Health reported 916 new diagnoses of HIV, which was back up about a 17% rebound from 2020, when Pennsylvania saw a drop of 21%. So if we look at the research, we know what made it drop. We should know what is making it go up, and we should act, right? That takes resources, that takes the advocacy you're doing in this room so that we make sure we are vigilant about not letting us slide backwards. We are witnessing the criminalization and weaponization of laws through the nation prohibiting gender-affirming care and the threats of jail time for parents and our doctors who would seek to provide it for young persons or individuals trying to simply live in harmony with who they truly are. My daughter has a trans partner. So I've seen this intimately, what that, you know, they're non-binary and what they've been going through. So it is critical, not just because it personally affects me, I was an ally before that, but it just brings it home real clear to me what is at stake. We continue to see attacks perpetrated against transgender individuals at an alarming rate. And in Pennsylvania, there's still no legal penalty for crimes motivated by sexual orientation or gender identity. We gotta change that. And we have advocates up and down. We have new folks going into, where did? New folks going into our legislature who are going to be loud and proud and out and work for this. So I'm not going to take any more time because I already took a lot. I appreciate your patience. But it was important for me to put my personal and my public persona together to tell you why it's important I lead my authentic life on knowing and acknowledging all of you and making sure I am your ally. I will keep working and working with my great colleague here as we go forward. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Nina. Next up is State Representative-elect Andre Carroll.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. These are tough acts to follow, so I'm gonna try my best, right? I mean, we had Madam Mayor and Council President bringing the energy. We got Council, Councilmember Gaudier bringing the resources. And Councilmember Ahmad, you got all the numbers, you know? You know, the math is math. And so, but what I got is my story, right? My name is Andre Carroll. I am the Democratic nominee for State Rep. in State House District 201, which covers neighborhoods Germantown, Logan, and West Oakland. I am currently slated to be the second openly black gay state representative in Pennsylvania's history. The other night, I had an opportunity to speak at an event, and I got a chance to share my story. And my story begins with my grandmother, who raised me, walking me a few blocks from my house to vote. And, you know, instilling into me at an early age the importance of voting. But often, I would help her hit the names of people who would not fully represent my whole self. I'm clearly a black man. So when people talk about criminal justice and they want to talk about discrimination, racism, and talk about my blackness, but often, I didn't hear about my queerness. You know, and right here in 2024, we still having the conversation of the first and the second, right? The fact that we just got our first LGBTQ Councilmember in 2023. You know, I want to thank you, Philadelphia, for delivering us Councilmember Ruelando. We need that, right? Growing up, I learned a lot about my history and often hearing about Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, right? And I watched a lot of documentaries about our heroes and our leaders. But it wasn't until recently I learned about a person named Bayard Rustin. It was a black queer man that curated the Civil Rights Movement, that became a part of the reason why my grandmother could walk me those few blocks to be able to vote for our elected leaders. You know, while identity does not make us qualified, representation deeply, deeply matters. You're right, when, I'm an organizer, right? And we got some organizers in the room. But you know, when it was time for queer people to lead the march, they banned the protest, right? When it was time for us to learn about queer history, they banned the book. You know, when it was time for us to talk about everyone having access to resources and services, our United States Supreme Court made it okay to discriminate against a queer couple and deny them services. You know, when queer people wanted to live out loud and just simply say "I do" to the person that they love, this country denied us that opportunity. So it matters when we have queer people on the local, state, and federal level in government across this country. So I'm deeply proud and honored to have this opportunity to be able to serve with my future colleagues and with folks like Councilmember Ruelando because we need these people to exist. For so long, people like myself has hid from our true identities because it hasn't been a popular thing to do. But that's no more. Councilmember Ruelando is a part of declaring June as Pride Month, and I'm excited, as a black queer man, to have all of me represented. So I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Andre Carroll, I can tell you right now, we are so amazingly proud of you and so lucky to have you representing us as well. He's a very, very special person. And now I'm honored to introduce another very special person, Tatiana Woodard, who is the Executive Director of the Arca Safety, the only shelter in Philadelphia that exclusively houses LGBTQ+ people, and also a new member of the city's Women's Commission. Come on up, Tatiana.
It is a privilege to stand in solidarity with you all and to celebrate pride and, as others before me have said, take action. And I always want to be intentional with this privilege. Coming from being homeless at 16, I now have the privilege to provide emergency housing to a marginalized community whose voices are often silenced and left out of the conversation. I use the word privilege to, one, identify my privilege, but to make others aware of the lack of privilege my fellow transgender community members endure. Though my organization is able to house 10 to 15 transgender individuals, that is only a drop in the bucket. We receive bid inquiries every day and have an extremely long waiting list. And I plead that we no longer turn a blind eye to the increasing issues of housing insecurity and discrimination against LGBTQ+ community, but especially our transgender community. Though we have came a long way from pride originally being a riot to now us declaring it a celebration, I hope this time next year that we are not only celebrating pride, but that we are celebrating inclusive housing policies for all. Over the next couple of months, I commit to working with Councilmember Rue, who has recently adopted me, to ensure that the needle is moving forward. Happy Pride.
The city is lucky to have you working too on your volunteer position with the Women's Commission. Thank you so much. Now, I have the honor also of bringing up Jasper Liam, the Executive Director of the Attic Youth Center, an exceptional organization that provides a variety of supports and resources for LGBTQ youth.
Good afternoon, everyone. That was a little anemic there, okay, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, I know we're not at school, but come on. My name is Jasper Liam. I am the Executive Director for the Attic Youth Center. Philadelphia's only independent LGBTQ youth program, serving LGBTQ youth and young adults and creating opportunities for them to develop into healthy, independent adults and creating safe, supportive environments for them to thrive. That is what we have solely focused on for the past 30-plus years. I'm gonna go off script for a minute to say that I'm really honored to be standing here among so many leaders in our city. And I grew up just outside of the city limits. I'm proud to be in the city now. And I can't tell you how much I have seen this city grow and change and be supportive. To be able to grow up here in a time, you know, the Attic started in 1993, you know, and the rhetoric we had was that there are no gay students, right? That gay youth couldn't possibly know who they were. But, you know, somehow straight youth, that was fine, right? They knew. And that's not, we know that's not true. And we are living in a time when, because there is so much anti-LGBTQ legislation, not just in our Commonwealth, unfortunately, but across the U.S. in 38 states, over 500 anti-LGBTQ plus bills, limiting our access to health care, to housing, to education, to being able to be in living environments that are safe for us, even if sometimes that is not our family of origin. And so what I want to emphasize is that the way these bills, positive and negative, affect our mental health is key. What I'm seeing now among our youth at the Attic is that every time we hear about another state passing an anti-LGBTQ bill, I see the despair in their eyes, in my staff's eyes, in my own, you know, in my mirror. And it's affecting us because we know that there are places in this country that we are not safe. We're not just not safe, we are outed. We are put in danger by bad legislation that is brought about by misinformation, by lies. We know that the COVID-19 pandemic resulted in worsening mental health for young folks, adolescents, really for all of us, right? Let's be real. And that was across the U.S., that was really globally, right? And 70% of LGBTQ youth experienced symptoms of severe depression in 2021. That was based on a CDC report. That is double the rate of their cisgender, non-LGBTQ peers. I want to be absolutely clear on something with this, though, because we've seen all of these studies about how, you know, LGBTQ youth or, you know, especially like trans and non-binary youth, especially with youth of color, are more likely to have certain risk factors, right? More likely to have certain diagnoses. And I want to be absolutely clear on this. It is not because of how any of us identify, right? It is not because of who we are, it's because of a lack of acceptance in our environments around us, right? The issue isn't that I am trans. The issue is that I cannot be trans and safe. I'm really proud that the school district of Philadelphia has Policy 252. I'm really proud that many years ago, the Attic Youth were a huge part of developing that policy. And I got the honor of, I was a new board member at the Attic, and I got the honor of being one of the trainers when we went out and put that out at a lot of the schools for the faculty and staff. And what I learned the other day is that this is great. We have this protection for our transgender, non-conforming youth, its students. But if a student comes out not as trans, but as gay, there's not necessarily a protection that makes sure that their parents won't be notified by somebody in the school district, right? So, hey, you're trans, okay, but no, I'm not supposed to tell your parents. But if you're gay, I can tell your parents as a teacher, and that is not okay. It is putting our youth in harm's way. It is putting our youth in harm's way. So in a time when we are having all of these bills, resolutions, like the ones presented by Councilmember Rue Landau, a great friend and advocate for our city, it sends a message to our whole community that Philadelphia will not stand for bigotry, homophobia, or transphobia. In Philly, we protect our LGBTQ communities. And in Philly, we protect our young folks. Thank you.
And finally, thank you, Jasper. And finally, um, but not, the last but not, by all means, not the least, I am so honored to bring up Sultan Shakir, the Executive Director of the Mazoni Center, which provides necessary holistic healthcare services ranging from therapy to primary care doctors for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. As the congressperson said, my name is Sultan Shakir. I'm the President and Executive Officer of the Mazoni Center. I'm also a proud Philadelphia native, um, and just so appreciative of all the great leadership that we have on council supporting, uh, queer people here in Philadelphia. So I was asked to talk about the challenges that we see people facing, particularly being a healthcare center. The thing about Mazoni Center is we see our patients and clients facing the same thing that most people here in Philadelphia face, affordable housing. We see people struggling with making a living wage that allows them to care for their family. We see them supporting loved ones who are struggling with health needs, whether they're small things but concerning things or larger, more complex issues like drug and alcohol abuse or opioid addiction. And the thing with the LGBT community is that the big difference is that many members in our community are struggling with those things, but at the same time, dealing with unnecessary discrimination and bigotry. We've seen doctors and nurses who are providing gender-affirming care get publicly attacked just for providing healthcare to our community. We've seen trans people denied jobs or housing just because of who they are. And we've seen our youth, as Jasper was talking about, be bullied just because they don't look or act the way that someone feels that they should look or act, or be thrown out of their homes. And so all of that, as the council person works with the council to look at discrimination, all of those things lead to some of the higher rates of everything from drug and alcohol abuse to homelessness to unfortunately what we've also talked about, which is suicidal ideation. And we can't afford to lose anyone else in our community. We have lost far too many people. And that's why we are so appreciative and so happy to work with Councilmember Landau and your leadership to really look at how we can not only identify what leads to the disparities, but really work to reduce them. And here at Mazoni Center, we work in healthcare. And so we are so also appreciative to announce that through working with the city and some of our other partners, we've been able to completely eliminate the waitlist for healthcare here at Mazoni Center. Thank you. So we know that healthcare alone is not going to eliminate a lot of the challenges, but we want people to know, while you're dealing with a lot of the challenges that we're hopefully, as a city, going to work to reduce, you can come to Mazoni Center and access care immediately. And so thank you to the members of council. Thank you to Rue for your leadership. And thank you to all the other community partners who helped create the welcoming city.
So I just wanted to take one more second to, uh, the sign says, "Don't touch the mic when speaking." I want to, uh, just take one more moment to say, um, this has been a really special, incredible day. I remember the very first time that I came into this room filled with queer people from every single part of our community. I even knows, uh, was Gloria Casares's, um, moment, her induction into or off to be the Director of LGBT Affairs. It is literally the first time I've seen city hall filled with queer people. And I am having that moment again of feeling like we're full circle. We've talked about, um, the issues affecting our community in such, um, detail. And while we've come a long way since then in 2008, uh, we have still have so much further to go. Um, I, I, I believe our allies and our, our support network and those who are elected and our incredibly strong community leaders have grown when we saw that long wingspan here, up here. And the, the folks out here that I know are doing the work every single day, all of the community activists, the nonprofit workers, the social workers, every single one of you are working so hard every single day to make sure that our community is healthier, safer, that we receive housing. And I know together, we can really overcome some of the obstacles and we can make this happen. So we, we need to do this together. We can do this together. This is a moment of pride. Uh, it feels so touching, uh, being up here with so many people and being here with you. And it is also, uh, it's a call to action. So we are now calling our city the city of brotherly love, sisterly affection, and sibling solidarity. This is our moment of solidarity, everyone. From this moment on, we gotta make it happen. We got us. We've got our allies. Let's lead on them. Let's hold them accountable. Let's hold me accountable. We can do this. Tons of love to you. Happy Pride Month. Safe, high Pride Month. Love you all.